Morning everybody all across the Navajo. We appreciate you chiming in. Today is January 7th. An update for our COVID-19 Town Hall meeting here. We do have an esteemed cast of health professionals here. And as we always do, open up with prayer. And then I'll introduce President Jonathan Nez to talk about today vaccines and the rollout and updates and the latest news about all of the vaccines that our Navajo Nation has been blessed with. So this time, let's open up in prayer. Yes. Yeah, the in God. We thank you, Lord, that you woke us up with another day of life, Father. You placed the breath of life in our lungs this morning, Father. But we are renewed every day. Lord, we also know that we can come to you for everything. Your tender mercies are made new every day. We pray for those, Lord, that are enduring hardship at this time, those that are sick, Father. We pray for healing. Those that are struggling, Father, we pray for an ease of their burdens, Father God. Even to the point of bringing aid and relief, Father God, in the physical. But we thank you that we do have a great cast here. Host, presentation panelists, Lord Father, that you bless them and bless them mightily, Lord Father. Keep them safe, Lord, from the virus, Lord, as they sacrifice themselves, Lord, to bring aid to the people all across the land. So our nation is blessed. And so as you continue to bless the nation, we also pray for protection, Lord, on leadership, Lord, and all those on this call, Father, may them and their families be found safe, Father. We thank you and we ask for wisdom, Lord, and unity, Father. Lord, that the people that are viewing here and those that will watch later, Lord, be blessed with the information, Lord, that was attained and disseminated from the knowledge of our health professionals, Lord. You bless them mightily, Lord, over time, Lord Father. And thank you now and be with them, Fathers. We convene the meeting on this January 7th, the COVID-19 Town Hall update. We pray, Father, your blessings upon the people of the land. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Yeah, the in God. Well, thank you and good morning. God bless you, Vice President here, Comanche Nishlatolh, Hanabashischin, Joe Comanche Deshache, Klaas Deshanella. It's good to be with you all again. As we get ready to receive updates here, just want to let you all know that we continue to pray for you and the nation. We continue to convene meetings on economic recovery, what that looks like. So as you know, our Navajo Nation, we are all consumers. We do consume and we have even more need for supplies during this virus outbreak. So we do have need for groceries, for sustenance, right? We have to travel, some of us great lengths to attain these. So be safe in your travel. Limit yourself to one person per vehicle and no large gatherings, especially in a vehicle as you travel. So be safe, be vigilant on your surroundings. And we also do advocate for you all to buy Navajo, buy local. And in our economic recovery work group, we are talking about bringing more grocery stores and what that would look like here on the nation. So economic development is one of the vital aspects of a pandemic. So we're all in this together. We appreciate the leadership of our President Jonathan Nez. And at this time, he will speak and give us his updates here. So we appreciate his exemplary leadership at this time. So ladies and gentlemen, the President of the great Navajo Nation, Jonathan Nez. Sir, the floor is yours.
Washington.
You know, I want to say thank you to Vice President in the prayer. I know that there's a lot of tension we see in the television, in the media, even social media. I just want to let everybody know that please let us pray for our nation, pray for our people, and let us not fall into this same predicament of negativity and harmful actions, you know? You see this happening throughout the country. But here on Navajo, you know, our way of life and our teaching reminds us that we are to take care of ourselves and our families and our community and overall our nation. And so let us be in unity in praying for this country and what's happening with the elections. Yesterday, we had the chapter officials, congratulations to the Navajo Nation chapter officials, grazing representatives, farm boards, alternative form of governments, townships, and many, many other officials who were inaugurated and took the oath of office to begin to help their people. And they're the first to be sworn in in a public health emergency, I believe, in recent times. And our Navajo people are looking to the officials, local officials, for support and comfort as well. So congratulations to the new officials. And we look forward to working with each and every one of them. Today, we're going to talk about the vaccine distribution. On the Town Hall, we have Roslyn So, the Navajo Area IHS Director, Dr. Christensen. We have the facility leadership here, the team from Chinli, Dr. Ritchie and his team from Northern Navajo Medical Center, Dr. Vincent and her team. And we also have Dr. Jill Jim, Navajo Department of Health, but focusing on Health Command Operations Center, HCOC, and the Unified Command Group giving us updates. And Navajo overseeing the 638s, we'll have Virgil Davis giving us an update, Christopher Curly and Dr. Michael Tutt and Deanna Hu from Tubus City as well, and Dr. Michael Tutt from Tsavo Medical Center. And that's the lineup today. And there are others that are going to provide updates and support the various presentations. And Dr. Fowler will also be translating for our Navajo speakers in Navajo language, those that only understand Navajo language. If you can go to the slide, we are going to talk about the Navajo Nation COVID-19 vaccination. And we're following the CDC ACIP recommendations that were handed down from the federal government. And as you see there, Phase 1A, healthcare personnel, long-term care facilities. So most of the individuals in this category have been vaccinated, those that want the shot. Some are now changing their mind that said, "We don't want the shot." Now they're saying they want the shot. So now we have to kind of go back to 1A and give those individuals shots. But we're hoping that, you know, people that want the vaccination tell us upfront when they want it because, you know, it gets pretty confusing. And then there's always misinformation going out there. I know some people are going to say, "Well, I wasn't offered it." You know, you were offered it. We told the healthcare facilities, we told you all on Town Hall meetings that it's going to be available. You just have to accept it. Please do not skew the information. If you didn't receive it the first time because you didn't want it, please be frank about it and say, "Yeah, I changed my mind," rather than starting rumors and saying, "You first said no, and then you say, 'Well, I wasn't asked if I wanted it or not.'" See, that's the misinformation that is starting to happen here in our communities. So if you look at the next phase, Phase 1B, they're, we're in the high-risk patient category, older patients, 65 years and older adults in congregate settings. Oh, I forgot, 1A, long-term care facilities, that's the nursing home and your staff vaccinated. So we're in Phase 1B, that top corner, it's going to be a full, I call it a full vaccination blitz. It's already started, the high-risk patients, some of the CHRs, PHNs are going out and giving shots to some of our high-risk patients. And some of our 65 years and older are getting vaccinated. But come this week, that's what's happening. And some of our people, most of the people that got their first shot in Pfizer, they'll be getting their second shot this week. So there's a blend of second shots for Pfizer, high-risk patients, and 65 and over. But come next week, January 11th, we're going to do a blitz, a vaccination blitz, if you want to call it that, or just getting out there and vaccinating what we have on hand and shots to those that are 65 years and over, high-risk patients, next week, Monday. And they're going to give you an overview, all these healthcare facilities are going to give you an overview of how they're going to do it. Like for instance, yes, Northern Navajo Medical Center had one at the chapter houses. Some will be chapter houses, some are going to be at the facility itself. PHN's going out to see their high-risk patients in the rural parts of the Navajo Nation. So there'll be a blend. So if you look at Phase 1B, you've got the high-risk patients, you've got the older patients, 65 plus years older, adults in congregate settings, first responders, spiritual leaders, that's medicine men, roadmen, pastors, again, those that want it, frontline essential workers. And then we go into essential infrastructure and essential businesses. And then we move into 51C. But 51B right now is what, where we're at, including some more of the 51A. Keep in mind that we don't have shots that will get into arms of everybody right now. But once we get into 511C, we're hopeful, like in March and April, then more of the healthy people, if you want to call it that, will get their shots during that time. So this pandemic is not over. We've got to wear our masks, we've got to social distance, we've got to wash our hands, we've got to stay home as much as possible. And because only essential workers and essential tasks should be done during this time. And so that is the Navajo Nation COVID-19 vaccine prioritization based upon the CDC's ACIP prioritizations here for our Navajo citizens. And I know that there are some groups out there, you know, they're saying, "Well, we want to be essential. We want to be on the front." When it comes to 65 years and older, a lot of these groups, most of them, will be vaccinated. I'll give you one example of Navajo Nation veterans. I received a report from the Veterans Affairs that over 60% of our veterans are 65 and over. So our veterans, based on the 65-year-old and up category, 60% of our veterans will be vaccinated. Same thing with spiritual leaders, medicine men, roadmen, and pastors. A lot of them will be in that 65 and over category. Teachers as well. And also, when it comes to teachers, I know that we're still on online courses and we are making sure that there will be doses available for our teachers so that we can begin to transition back into teachers, into the schools. But students, we are looking at the data that we receive in regards to reopening schools. So just keep that in mind. Because as you know, outside the Navajo Nation, high cases in Arizona and all around us. And you've got this new variant in Colorado and California, really close by to Navajo. But we have yet to have any reports, as I know it, of that new strain being here on the Navajo Nation. So with that said, I'm going to turn the time over to Dr. Jill Jim here to give her report. And thank you all for listening today. I know that I didn't give the numbers for yesterday's, but visit our social media pages. The COVID-19 numbers are on there. Go to HCOC, the COVID numbers are on there. But today specifically, we want to have a Town Hall for the prioritization of the vaccine distribution. Dr. Jill Jim, God bless you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, President, for that remarks here this morning. Public health executive orders. Any [speaking Navajo] Yesterday, [speaking Navajo] was a live COVID-19 vaccine page. Although we hope to provide more information, I say the Laguna, they have this. So we hope to provide information on here for everyone. There is a webpage now for everyone to see where the prioritization are. As President Nez said, we are following the ACIP guidelines, which are the entity, the advisory committee to the CDC that makes recommendation on any vaccine. Of course, to see where we are focusing on the Of course, to see where we are focusing on the COVID-19 vaccine. So just to let everyone know, to be patient, and we are, it will eventually be your turn. However you receive your information, it will be shared with by the health facilities today. And there isn't enough for everybody, and so just wanted to just show the webpage here. And you can continually check on where those are at. We'll probably be adding more information, hopefully from the health facilities. And also, in the future, we'll be showing how many vaccines have been distributed as well. So I just wanted to share that, just share the information to everyone. And now I want to turn over time to Ms. Roslin So. She's the area director for the Navajo Area IHS.
Good morning, everyone. This is Roslin So. Thank you for that, Dr. Jim. Again, I'll just be very brief, because I do want you to hear from, directly from some of our healthcare officials regarding how we are rolling out the vaccine at each of our facilities. Just an update here, we're still continuing to monitor hospital capacity on a daily basis. You know, we still, as you can see, the numbers coming out of the President's office on a daily basis. There are still high numbers of positive COVID patients that we're seeing. But we're still monitoring that, and I'm very impressed with the abilities of our hospital to continue to manage all of the patients that they are working with. In addition to that, we have, again, stood up the VA support. This is the Veterans Administration, where we have craft agreements with the VA to allow our facilities, our hospitals, to transfer to the VA when necessary or if we need higher level of care for some of our patients. We also have, as of today, three Department of Defense teams on the ground. These are medical teams, actually Navy, Navy team members that are on the ground. They are at Shiprock, Chinlea, and today they are at Gallup Indian Medical Center. This is a welcome, welcome information, a welcome team members for us. It allows us to sort of catch our breath and allow our staff to, our providers, to take hopefully a little bit of a break as we have our team members here to help us do this. And we are also working to do a reload, if you will, reload, meaning that we wanna add more days to the days that we already have approved for the teams to be on the ground. I've only heard positive things from our staff and from the support that we're getting. So I appreciate the Department of Defense teams being on the ground. We also continue to focus on COVID testing. These are at all of our facilities, so, and then of course, we're talking about vaccine today. So you can imagine that we're still carrying a heavy load with the hospital visits that we have, with the testing that we're still trying to do, and then now rolling on top of that, the vaccine activities. But I do wanna take a moment to, you will hear from some of our medical team members out in the field. Again, very thankful for the Navajo Area IHS team members. It has been 317 days since we stood up our emergency operation system for the Navajo Area. And so we have been in this process for close to a year now. And then, again, thank you to my medical staff members that will be on the ground. And also, thanks to Dr. Christensen, again, she has worked diligently from day one to help us navigate through the pandemic. And I appreciate her leadership and her support as we walk through this process. So with that, I wanna turn it over to Dr. Christensen. Thank you.
Hey, good morning, and thank you, Ms. So. Thank you all for being on this call today. I wanna thank each and every one of you who has received the vaccine for stepping up to protect yourself, to protect your family, your friends, and your communities. I do wanna tell you that you still must be very vigilant after getting the vaccine. You will get the most immunity from the first dose at 10 days, at which time you're over 50% protected. When you receive your second dose in 21 to 25 days, you will reach over 90 to 95% protection. So, all of you that got your vaccines and those who are waiting, wash your hands, watch your distance, and please wear your masks to continue to protect yourself. Just very briefly, for Navajo Area, we have received over 20,000 doses of vaccine. And as of yesterday, adding in the fantastic numbers from Northern Navajo's drive yesterday, we are over 11,600 given vaccines. This is over 50%, which the US average is less than 30%. So we are doing an exceptional job of getting the vaccine out. And this will continue for the next weeks as we get more supply. We will schedule more events and try to reach more of you with the vaccine. Thank you for your patience. We will definitely get to you. And we are dedicated to getting this out as efficiently and timely as possible. So I wanna just ask you, please stay strong and safe. And I'm going to introduce our service units that are reporting today, and I thank them for taking the time to be with us. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Eric Ritchie from Chinlea Service Unit.
I thank you, Dr. Christensen, and thank you, President Nez, for organizing today's event. Thank you, everyone, for having us on the call. I'm Dr. Eric Ritchie, I'm the Clinical Director at Chinlea Comprehensive Healthcare Facility. And I'm joined today by Lieutenant Commander Nevadita Das, who is our Mass Vaccination Task Force Leader. I'm happy to report that here at Chinlea, we've given out over 3,000 doses of COVID-19 vaccines to date. We've been able to vaccinate all of our healthcare workers with the Pfizer vaccine, and they're all receiving their second doses this week. In addition, we've been able to vaccinate over 80% of our hospital staff. And we've moved on to Tier 1B community members, starting back on December 23rd. So for over two weeks now, we've been doing vaccines for the general public. And that includes our elders over age 75, as well as essential workers that we've invited to come to get vaccinated at our facilities. Those efforts are continuing, and they're ongoing right now throughout this week. Beginning next week, we're going to open a drive-through service at Chinlea Comprehensive Healthcare Facility that will be specifically for elders over the age of 65 or 65 years and older. And that'll be open every day and available to any elder that wants to come and seek vaccination here at our facility. In addition, our facilities in Salie and Penon are continuing to offer vaccinations by appointment for senior citizens as well as essential workers in our communities. And I just wanted to briefly turn it over to Lieutenant Commander Das to give an update on our pod operations.
Hi, good morning. So, so far, we have used a couple different pods in the hospital and also close-field pods to vaccinate our healthcare workers and patients who are 75 years and older, and of course, essential community workers. Starting 1/11, we are going to be setting up a drive-through open pod, which will be two lanes. And that will be at Chinlea Comprehensive Healthcare Facility. It will be for 65 years and older. The hour operations will be 8:30 to 4:30, and of course, this will be done on a walk-in basis. Salie and Penon, they will continue to, again, keep vaccinating people who are 65 years and older. But that will be done on an appointment basis. Additionally, inside the hospital, we'll still continue to have a clinic pod where we have set up a system to contact employers of essential community workers and businesses. So the way this is gonna work is that we are going to reach out to them. We are going to ask them to, this is the name of employees on Form 213. Once we receive that form, then we will schedule them to come in into our hospital clinic pod and get vaccinated.
Great, thank you. That's all the updates from Chinlea, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vincent at Shiprock.
Hello, and good morning. Thank you, Ms. So and President Nez, for inviting me to the call this morning. I think I wanna address an implied concern that was indicated earlier on the call, which is, I think when you see lines of cars lined up waiting for vaccination, the question is, are the priorities of the Navajo Nation being followed? And I want to reassure you that, in fact, they are being followed. I wanna also provide some overview numbers. We have 1,300 staff members, frontline healthcare workers, hospital employees within our service unit. We have 2,500 patients over the age of 75, and 65, I'm sorry, 5,000 patients between the ages of 65 and 74. So we have 7,500 patients over the age of 65. And we have another 20,000 patients, and there's some overlap within that group, of people with chronic healthcare conditions. So when you see a line that long, are there really that many people and the priorities who need vaccination? And the answer is yes. So yesterday, and so in order to meet those groups of people, we are doing a three-pronged approach. One is community events. There is the one yesterday at Shiprock, the last vaccination was given, I believe, at 6:53 PM. And a total of 1,797 doses were given yesterday. And so, and then the next one is at the Nanahod Chapter today. And we received a text message that there are already significant numbers of people at the event. They're going to count up the number of vaccine doses that they have, and they'll let people know when we run out of doses so that our patients don't have to wait. We are targeting patients over the age of 75. The information we wanna get out is that once people receive the dose of vaccine, they should wait two weeks before getting any other immunization. Our elders who've already had COVID illness should wait 90 days prior to getting the vaccine. And that any elders wanting to be vaccinated do need to have, because of tracking purposes, do need to have an active chart at our facility, because that's the only way we can actually track the vaccine doses. So in addition to community events, we are also doing home visits. Our PHNs are going into people's homes for those patients of chronic medical illness. And then we're also doing our outside drive-through by invitation only. And so the plan is to target that Phase 1 patient population. So yesterday, we targeted patients 65 and older, and then also frontline essential workers. That is... Let's see, I'll dial back. Drive-in, so that's our third mode of reaching our patients. We also have a drive-in, and that is by invitation. And patients are coming into our pharmacy, drive-in area, where we've also got an immunization clinic. So again, we have 7,500 people in our service unit that are ages 65 and older. We have 1,300 staff members, and we have over 20,000 people in our service unit who have chronic medical conditions. And we are meeting that need through the following: community events, home visits, and our drive-through. And we are very careful to stay within those phases. So I do wanna reassure people on the call. I did indicate that there are three points of education we're trying to get to our elders, and I'll review that again, which is waiting at least 90 days. I'm sorry, that if there's a recent COVID infection, waiting 90 days to get the vaccine, waiting two weeks, once the vaccine is administered, to get any other type of vaccine. And then you must have an active chart at the hospital to allow for vaccine tracking purposes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Christensen. I'll turn this over to Dr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Ba'na ha'shne'eh. Di du'kos nza nas e't'at'ah ne'do na'nt'eh go. En lenas et di. Ninety days. Ah de inta is'eh i na'ad od nihtan. La'eh kodo be hi l'chahot. Na'ba'ah hu'nosim. Ado aj na'ani ne'je is'eh na'ad neho. E is'ta' na'atsos i. E eke'ad na'te'ehi. E behoz'na'od od ni. Ado di ho'wan ho'otcha'ad na'chah'i. Ncha'ad sh'ne'eh is'el enetan leni. Aj do'shu'ido sani yanda ka'ah'i. E do aj is'eh ah'adeh eh. Ado e kuda'atsos. Leni eke'ad wandan te'eh. Ado outside driver deh lni. E ya cha'ch'eh eh'eh inhot. E ya shik edo shidne'eh. Di na'ani ne'je. Cha'ch'eh eh'eh inhot. E ya e na'atsos i. Ah de drive through deh lni. E aj's do'tsos. E na'ani ne'je ho'et eh. Ch'ni li de bahu'ishne'eh. E shat'oh na'ad eh. Ah kodo da'ad e na'ani ne'je. E di ash'tcha'ad di no'ah. Ash'tla'beda che'ah do. Elan'je edeh ne'ch'i. O hi u e is'eh ba'at'as ka'ah. Ah kodo ado di al'nas go ne'je. E di'shu'isani turke'ji ke'ad dan leni. Na'nt'ke'ni ah b'tanas ah edeh ne'ah. Ado is'eh leni do ah. Hajin taga adel dan hi ch'ohliya na'ad ni. Ah kodo ashon de be el'ch'ah hu'nosim do. Nihi zal'leni ah ba'at'ah hu'hl'yan do. Da'at'ah hu'hl'yan. Dan hi lni is'eh il'eneh. Ad e ya nas na'od od j'esh. E di sh'te'eh leni Dr. Jill Jim. Banadit'oh. Ah Dr. Jim?
Heh. K'ad Dr. Fowler. K'ad di et'ch'ah hu'ihne'eh gi. She non. K'ad di nas ho'ldus. So e k'ad di Mr. Christopher Curly. K'ad nihi nihi ch'ah na'ad o'tje. E he's the president of the six thirty eight Association of Healthcare in Navajo Nation. So k'ad hi na'ani Christopher Curly. K'ad she non. K'ad nihi ch'ah na'ad eje. Heh.
Ah k'ashin yat e beneh. Ashik e'no'leni gi. Are dhai'so'ltsa'gi do. K'ho'n. M'jen go e ya nihi l'ha'ne'eh. Ado k'ho'yat eko ekho'n re. Has'ilt taga is'eh ah'ad od ni. Beni ye eko nihilche'hu'it'ah. Kud'eh is'eh il'ena'ah. Are she'eh di yat pihmit'ho'di d'ne'eh n'sle. Ado tz'lt'ach ya'ani. E bash'esh ch'inn do. She'ah na'le. Le't'ash'tshe'eh do. E't'ash'tshe'eh. Ot'ah dan nen n'sle. Le't'ho'na'hal'ni. Se'cha'ah. Ah ho'na'at ho'no'eh yat e. Are go e ya. Are e yat na't'al'kai. Nash'ut'ch'ap'ah e'ah. Sh'ad'ah hal'yan ho'et'ah. Cha'dina'ma'ana'ah. Le't'se di'tho'de. E ay si are she'ah haz'li. Ho'et'ah eka'egeh. Ho'et'ah go eka'egeh. Six thirty eight wul ye. American Association of American Indians for Self-Determination wul ye. Go di k'ho'n na'adi na'cha'ad. Cha'ad go't. Six thirty eight wul ye. Go len Navajo Nation Council dan. Ho'et'ah yen di'je. E aben k'ho'n dan eh. Ad nen leni gi k'ho'n. B'se il'ido k'ho'n is'eh na'ka'ah'i api yi'ol. W'ol'oh'ani go. E ho'et'ah kodo nihilak Eli'ah. S'le kodo Winslow. Do Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation. Do Utah Navajo Health System. E are else ho'et'ah. Yi'ch'ah'ah go. Do are nen yi'da dish. Yi'da dish ne'ch'oh. Di di e yat si hin'esh chi. E w'ch'ehi gi e aj b'ts'et'ah setah. Ado kodo Vice President. E in'le St. Carlos Apache. Mr. Steve Titla. Shik'ad as'et'ah. Ado le't'ha'ehi th'ho're e ya Mrs. Kimberly Williams. Wul ye. E aj e ya Secretary Treasurer in L'ego. Tan ay si t'cha'ah ho'et'ah. Ado six thirty eight leadership. E di k'ash'i. Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation la. Ado Winslow Indian Healthcare Center. Utah Navajo Health System. Fort Defiance Indian Health Board Incorporated. Ado Reima Navajo. Canyecito Banner Navajos. Alamo. Ado St. Carlos Apache Healthcare. Ho'et'ah t'epi go e ya. Yi'da ho'et'cha. Ado Sage Memorial. Do hajin hi ka'ah ho'et'ah. Ah kodo ho'et'ah hi l'deh ne'ch'i. Go di is'eh bahhu'in. In go k'ho'n. Ah'ah'wo'eh do. Ah'ah'wo'eh dena'hi si t'cha'ah go. Ah'ho'nsa'ad ne'ezna'ad. T'yn'te'eh zit. Ah kodo ah hi ol'ch'ahl. Ah kodo heh. E ya. Ton hi d'esh ni l'nsa'ah. Shik'ad e'no'leni gi. Kodo ay si ye go. E k'ho'n eh t'cha'ah. Wul ye. Di du'kos na'ahl ni. K'ho'n yi t'cha'ah go. Ado k'ho'ha nen. Hajin elan'eh eh dan eh. Beda dish na'di k'ho'n is'eh is'ek. Abi ah'ad od ni. Ah'ani go. E k'ho'n nihi t'cha'ah go. Ashon. Ncha'has'thu'ido k'ho'n. Nihi sa'ani k'ho'n. Yat eko ekho'n. Bah'ad at'od ni. Beni ye na'ok'ah. Bel'sela'ah go. Ho'et'ah. Ncha'ad ne'eh. Ah kodo di kodo. Ncha'as'eh elan'eh dan eh. Ncha'ad da'ne'ech le is'eh il'ego. O'ye she'ah yah dan eh sk'ha'ah do. Yah'te'eh di sk'ha'ah go. Kodo ashon. Ashon eh. Bedi bedi t'ego. Sh'obbe ka'ad itje. Do ah kodo e go e ya. Ncha'ad at'od ni. Ah kodo di di'je. Kodo di kodo e Dr. Michael Tut. Nihi l'ha'ad od ni. E in'le se'ho't so. The Fort Defiance Indian Health Board. E go e is'eh il'eneh le. Ado six thirty eight je. Do ah kodo nihi ka'ad na'alu'eh. As a medical doctor. Ado Dr. Diana Hu. Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation dan. She's a fellow in American Indian. American Academy of Pediatrics. She aj el'shen'eh. Bah'ah el. Ado epidemiology. Tubus City Regional. Do aj ho'et'ah nihi l'ha'ad od ni. Ado Mr. Virgil Davis. Else do le Winslow. E go Chief Operating Officer. J'eh'lego. Ton hi l'ha'ad od ni. Ho'et'ah e kodo. O heh. E ya hu'in'zen'eh do. Do heh. Nihi d'esh ni l'ke'ho'n. Kat ho'nsa'ag oh'oh. J'sh'to k'ho'n. Ki nan ta'ah. President Nez. Do Vice President Lizer. Bel ch'yn'de'eh ne'ch'i. Do aj ba'andad ne'ch'i gi. Ado ashan'ah Dr. Jill Jim. Do ho'et'ah bel ch'yn'de'eh ne'ch'i. Navajo Department of Health. Ado k'ho'n re six thirty eight leadership. Ho'et'ah bel ch'yn'de'eh ne'ch'i. Ah kodo di ay si b'ts'sela'ah gi. Nihi d'ne'eh. Bah'ha'hasen. E di ay si ye go. E k'ho'n nihi d'ne'eh. Jo'ah. Es'eh na'di ka'ah do jo'ah. N'da'de'eh ne'ch'i. Di k'ho'n kat. Ah'ah'wo'eh gena'hi si t'cha'ah do. Ch'epi g'ero da'ah hu'il'ne'eh. Di ch'epi ho'et'ah. Ch'epi g'ereh. Go nihi nihi l'ha'shne'eh. Oh'ad es'neh. Shik'ad e'no'leni gi. Ah kodo. I just want to say thank you to all of you that are on the call today. Listening to our Navajo Nation Leadership. Listening to our healthcare professionals. Our Navajo Department of Health. And being able to work with Dr. Jim and six thirty eight leadership. Also Indian Health Services. Mr. Roslin So. Captain Brian Johnson. Being able to come together, working with FEMA. And Arizona and New Mexico. Utah Navajo Department of Health. We have come together to take on this virus. And we've been working on a daily basis to combat COVID-19. And I just want to wish all of you that we will consider to take this vaccine. And being able to get into this herd immunity. As you have heard from all of our healthcare providers and healthcare professionals that are urging us to get the vaccination. And as representatives of communities out in Navajo. We want to be able to encourage our Navajo people to consider taking this vaccine. Ado being able to get vaccinated and achieve this herd immunity. Hopefully we'll be at a ninety-five percent level to be able to achieve this. Ah kodo. I just want to say thank you to all of you to be able to be on this call. And I just want to express also my heartfelt condolences to those that have lost family members to COVID-19. Our thoughts and prayers are with you, each one of you out there. And I want to just go ahead and move along on our agenda to introduce to you my Dr. Michael Tut from Fort Defiance. Thank you. Sh'nan'ah Dr. Jim? Dr. Tut, are you on call?
...call. And once again, also thankful for being able to work with an excellent team of providers, nurses, support staff here at Tubus City. But also across the reservation. Because I know we've all been struggling to not only deal with the pandemic, but also get this vaccination rollout done as quickly as possible. One of the things I would just like to make sure that all of the people listening understand is that each service unit has a slightly different delivery process than the other service unit. You've heard already from Dr. Ritchie about how they've had a clinic-based operations as well as a drive-up. How Dr. Vincent has helped coordinate NNMC, an amazingly comprehensive drive-up plan as well as a home delivery plan for some of her patients. And here at Tubus City, we have a slightly different plan as well. And so if you hear disparate comments from people across the reservation, the role, while we're all following the phases, we all may be in different parts of the phases right now. Because of vaccine supplies being different. Because of infrastructure being different at the different hospitals. To be able to deliver the vaccine to all of our needy, vulnerable patients and community members. So here at Tubus City, I know that we've given probably over twelve hundred vaccines to date. Both to community members, first responders, employees. And we're now going to do more rollouts with patients. We have already started our patient rollouts. And we are doing community-based clinics, which are done by appointment only. We're setting up a hotline so that patients can call in, but also they are getting referrals from their primary care providers. We are also setting up a drive-up blitz for seventy-five and older only that have a chart at the Tubus City Service Unit and reside in our communities. That will be on January fifteenth at our Tubus City High School. We are setting up a potential similar event at Sacred Peaks. But we do not have confirmation yet about the exact dates and times. The Sacred Peaks Health Center in Flagstaff is reaching out to their primary care patients as well to make sure that they are not neglected, even though they live off the reservation. And we are also working with our community businesses and essential healthcare providers as well as essential people like teachers, bus drivers, NTOA, et cetera, to set up priority lists to try and get everybody vaccinated as quickly as possible. We really appreciate the patience of all of you business administrators and owners with us. Because as the vaccine supplies have been amazingly robust, but also scheduled basically days before we receive them. We are trying to be as nimble as possible to respond to those vaccination supplies. But sometimes it's a bit of a heavy lift to try and mobilize basically fifty people to deliver vaccines in a forty-eight hour period. So please be patient with us. Please understand that if you access websites, if you access the Navajo Nation website, if you access the Tubus City Regional website, if you contact our hotlines, you may have a little delay in getting that information, but we are going to try as best we can to reach out in many different avenues. Through social media, through our billboards, through our websites, through chapter houses, through our CHRs, to get the information to the public as quickly as possible and as current as possible. Because things literally are changing every twenty-four to forty-eight hours as vaccine supplies change. So once again, we appreciate everyone's patience with us and keep getting vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hu. Let's go ahead and move over to Dr. Tut.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So this is Dr. Michael Tut calling from So'otl Medical Center. And I think a lot of, a tremendous amount of information has been shared with you all out there on Navajo land. We have, you know, I was talking to my daughter yesterday about the vaccine. Explaining to her how vaccines being made available, how people are coming and trying to get vaccinated. And she made an analogy. Says, oh, like when, on Black Friday, when Walmart offers television for really cheap price. But then a whole bunch of people show up and only a few people get the television. It's a similar situation now. You know, we will vaccinate everybody on Navajo Nation over time. We can't make a run for the lines expecting to be vaccinated because of the supply line. The supply chain is limited. But every week, there's more supplies coming through. And it's going by the needs of where the high-risk people are located. Right now, the elder people, they're the most likely to suffer greatly from COVID. So here at Fort Defiance, we are concentrated on those particular age group. Eventually, it'll be marched off, marched out. But the thing to remember is in nineteen eighteen, I keep going back to nineteen eighteen. The only measures that I had back then was face masks. Washing their hand and staying away from each other. That has to continue. Even after you get vaccinated, we still have to practice that public health measure of wearing our face mask. You know? I was asking about how many flu patients have come through the door? Meaning how many people have come in with influenza being diagnosed? We haven't had an influenza diagnosis here at the hospital because everybody's wearing face mask. It works just as well for influenza. The face mask is probably the most important thing to do during this time, this trying time of trying to keep our people safe, our community safe, our elders safe, our kids safe. That's what we need to do. This needs to be a community, a Navajo Nation effort. There's no shit. Ash'te'eh. This is for your family, for your community, for your people. This is the way we will survive as a Navajo Nation. We've gone through many calamities and we're still here. We were here five hundred years ago. We're going to be here five hundred years from now. Because as I know, as a Navajo. Then then, then itla. We are resilient and we will overcome this calamity that has come onto our land. So again, we just have to maintain patience with our providers. Our providers are doing their best. They are tired emotionally, spiritually. And you know, I've heard that from our workers here. There is an element of depression, of anxiety because they've been in this situation for ten, ten months, more than ten months. So again, I emphasize to everybody out there, you will be vaccinated. Just follow the public health guidelines right now. And then from our place, you will be contacted with an appointment for the high-risk patients. And eventually, there will be more mass vaccination. In our particular area, we want to make sure it's gated. Meaning gated meaning we only let so many people go through because we don't want to have a bunch of people waiting and then we run out of vaccination. We want to make sure we don't, we don't do that. We want to make sure everybody gets a vaccination. But it has to be done in a way where it's safe for the patient also, the providers and workers here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Tut. Ch'eh heh. Let's go over to Mr. Virgil Davis, Chief Operating Officer for Winslow Indian Healthcare Center. Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Frontline workers, our first responders and working with our communities out there in Navajo. Den'evi ke'ah go k'ho'n de. Hajin elan'eh dan eh. B'te'eh no'leni sh'oh ba'he'ens'eh. Go di'sh'no'k'ho'n nihi sala'ah. Do k'ho'n nihi sala'ah so. Do ba'hu'hl'yan go e ya. J'sh'ak'ot e go ekho'n re. Heh. Nihi d'esh ni l'oh.